I call this regular meeting of the Village of Villa Park Planning and Zoning Commission to order, roll call. Calvert?
Here.
Hofstra?
Here.
Jackson? Lemieux?
Here.
Lutke?
Here.
Orlowsky?
Here.
Romano?
Here.
Shlinsky?
Here.
I to am present with that, we have quorum. Let's see, approval of minutes. Is there, anybody have any amendments or anything to the minutes from April 11th, 2024? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Make that motion.
Motion seconded? Seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. So, we have three items of business this evening, one of which is going to be continued to June 13th. Is there, so the item that's going to be continued is PZ 2402, which is 600 North Villa. Is there anyone that wanted to, there's not going to be a public hearing on it this evening, and the to be continued, I guess, is on the agenda, but is there anyone that wanted to comment on that as part of the non-agenda comments? Okay. Does anybody have non-agenda comments at all? Okay. All right, so, let me explain the way this evening is going to work. Each item, we will have staff presentation, then we'll have a presentation by the petitioner, if they have a presentation, then public input or questions, and then we'll have questions from the commission, closing comments from the petitioner, if there are any, and then we'll have discussion up here and a motion tonight, if necessary. So what I would ask now is, anybody that's going to speak on either 24 East Monroe or 231 East North Avenue, or thinks that they might want to speak on it, please stand, we'll get everybody sworn in at once, and we won't have to do it later. If you're not sure, just stand and get sworn in, it's quicker that way, otherwise we'll get you later individually. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you'll give in these proceedings is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So first, we have PZ 2402, 600 North Villa Avenue, requesting a continuation, correct, to a date certain of June 13th, 2024. Is there a motion for that continuation?
Still moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is continued to June 13th, 2024. Next item is PZ 2408, 24 East Monroe Street, variation, petitioner James M. Vanderheiden. Whenever you're ready.
The subject property located at 24 East Monroe Street, requests for a variation for a side yard setback. I'll go over a summary of the requests allowed for the petition, allowing for the clarification of the petition, returning for permission, especially the motion appropriate. The existing home is located in RS 7.5 district. Existing principal structure on the lot has a side yard setback of 4.5 feet. The petitioner is requesting a second story addition above the existing first floor of the home, and the proposal also includes a first floor compliant, sorry, addition on the rear of the home. The required side yard setback for that RS 7.5 district would be six feet, and the proposed setback of the second floor addition would be 4.5 feet, which is encroaching into the required side yard setback of 1.5 feet. On the screen, you can see a site plan, and the red box is the portion of the home which requires the variation. The green box indicates the permitted principal building envelope. On the screen are some existing photos of the current home, and then floor plans if necessary to refer to. The mouse is not cooperating, sorry. And then on the screen currently, oh, no, went too far. The red arrow on the south elevation indicates the wall that would be requiring the variation. As you can see, that is straight up above the existing first floor of the home. On the screen are the variation standards to be, to have a variation approved. These standards would need to be met by the petitioner. We will hold a public hearing for any comments related to the case, and then staff has provided a sample motion if the commission feels that staff or the petitioner can answer the questions.
All right, thank you. Sir, presentation from the petitioner this evening. So please state your name for the record and spell your last name, please.
My name is James Vanderheiden, spelled V-A-N-D-E-R-H-E-Y-D-E-N.
Thank you.
And my client is also here this evening, so he's happy to answer any questions that might be directed more towards the owner. And I think the staff and the staff report was pretty clear, pretty straightforward. Our dilemma is that the house that my clients purchased was built before the changes in the zoning ordinance that now make it non-compliant with the side yard. Our desire is to add to the house second floor space for new bedrooms and bathrooms, and the logical solution is to go straight up from the first floor. If we had to move that back 18 inches or 17 inches in order to comply, that creates a little bit of a dilemma in terms of structural engineering, in terms of load transfers. This, the proper solution is to bring that load down to a foundation system and transfer it down to the ground. So, we are looking for an appeal from zoning board to allow us to extend the facade on that side of the building, which is 15 inches out of compliance, so that our second floor can mirror our first floor on that side elevation. I'd be happy to answer any other specific questions that you might have-
Okay.
-about the design.
Okay, so we'll take public comment and questions from the public, and then we'll go back to if we have questions, there'll probably be some.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Questions from the commission?
I've got some questions. Mark and Michelle, I have a clarification, just for understanding. The existing houses would be a non-conforming structure, is that how that would be sort of termed relative to the code? I, when I see the language of the, of the, of the proposed motion, are we essentially allowing a full four-foot setback across the entire property at that boundary line? The way it's worded, when we're asking for a reduction to four feet of, for the setback, is that what-
So it'd be for the entire interior side lot line?
Okay.
In relation to, the motion does include these exhibits as part of the motion?
Yeah, I'm, so nothing would stop them from building the deck, or anybody subsequent down the line to four feet then, that's on the back end, right? I mean, without, anything we would start to, that they could consider down the line, would push them to four feet at some point in time?
Eric, I may be able to clarify, the second, or the latter portion of the recommended action does indicate four feet along the east property line?
Right.
So I think it's specific enough, in my interpretation, that it's the east property line as it pertains to the interior side yard. So I don't see, and I don't interpret this, as the reduction of the side yard for the whole property, I think it's specific enough along that east-
No, I understand, yes. I'm not suggesting that it wasn't. I have questions, yes, thank you.
We tied the motion specifically to as Exhibit B, which shows exactly where the non-conformity is, at the existing footprint of the home.
Okay.
We notified it on the entire lot line, but through the particular motion and the ordinance approval, Exhibit B will come along with it, as to be, here is the existing-
And Exhibit B is a, is the survey?
Yeah. The footprint is not changing for the second story elevation.
Fine. The footprint is changing at the front porch, so we're increasing the non-conformity at that location there, is that correct? There's no front porch?
We are not increasing the non-conformity of the front porch. And there's an addition off the rear, which also is-
Well, the front porch doesn't exist, correct?
The porch is just a walk-up to the front door, correct?
Correct, yes. Yeah, it's a little covering off the, off that multipurpose room on the east side of the house, correct, yes. Do you understand what I'm, you understand what I'm asking, right? We're-
Yes, yes.
Extending, extending the east wall of the house up is one thing because of the structural footprint that we're sort of, you know, tying to, but now we're adding a front porch that's then going to further encroach into the, into that particular side yard more than it is now. There's nothing there now, now we're adding, we're allowing that to continue to encroach, right, that, that front porch?
Right, I see what you're saying.
Just thinking of that neighbor, right? It's fairly tight back there, I mean, that's that sort of awkward side corner, corner lot, right?
Yeah, that's, that's fair. I'd almost make, you know, I'd almost amend my own recommended motion, and instead of Exhibit B, tie it to Exhibit A1, that if you're okay with that particular additional encroachment, that it's tied to what they're actually proposing now, and doesn't give you the full length of the east lot line at four feet.
Yeah, when you say A1, that's the-
On the architectural set, the first of the, which has the furze idea for it. And not tied to the bottom of the third.
Right. I mean, by right, that porch should be back at six feet off of the property line. If they were to come in and just build a porch and not deal with the second floor-
Yeah.
Unless, unless they were asking, say, hey, we want to make this thing go wider and the reform and all that sort of stuff, right? And then that becomes the conversation of, that we're at here.
Yes. That is correct. And on the rear, all of those additions do meet the six feet.
Right. That little bay and the deck itself.
The addition of the deck.
Mark, it would seem that S1 would be more applicable because it indicates where the foundations, which are a permanent structure, would be for the foundation plan.
Do you have other questions, Eric?
No, I, just from my, from my perspective, I'd be more inclined to see that porch pulled back to the six feet and, and, or the, yeah, to the six foot off of the, off of the side yard. I mean, I, it makes sense for the house, just because of that, the existing footprint, and we're going up from there. We're building this front, they're building the front porch, so they should build that in compliance, right? I mean, I think that's, that's what we're trying to work towards, considering how strange that is at four and a half feet now. That's just my opinion. I guess that'd be a question, the petitioner, would that pose any issues if that, if the rest of the commission up here agrees with my perspective, is that-
Yeah, I think you have kind of understand the, the design solution-
Completely, yes.
And perhaps the, our petition maybe was not completely accurate in saying that it's just for the second floor addition to align with the first floor, but it's also to do that front porch, which is an extension of the permanent building structure, and to allow the front porch also to be part of the petition, and the, a set, reducing the setback requirement for the front porch.
Right.
So, the rear deck, which is not what I consider a permanent structure, because it could be taken, torn down and changed, it is six and a half feet from the lot line, so it's completely compliant.
Right, yeah, yes.
And then, of course, anybody who wanted to extend less than six feet would have to come back and request-
And a subsequent petition, exactly.
Subsequently. So, our petition involves the second floor addition, and it involves the front porch, which, that front porch is designed to be a little patio space off of the family room, the new family room on the front floor. So logically, aligning it with the first floor architecturally-
Correct.
It makes sense, but it, we have to get your approval to do that, otherwise we would have to set it back.
Right. And that's my question back to staff was, I mean, that's, by including that porch, we're extending the existing non-conformity, is that, is that, am I accurate in that-
Yeah.
...description? Okay.
Right. And I was coached that we, we should do that, but not increase the non-conformity.
I understand, yes.
Increase what?
Is, can you throw up the front elevation again? I just want everybody to see the design and the design solution. So we have, this is a neighborhood that is a mixture of one-story and two-story buildings, and I've been doing projects like this for 40 years, probably about 250 of these, and the houses on either side are one stories. So that roof line and that porch addition is a very deliberate design decision to try to complement the scale and the character of the homes on either side.
It's very intentional, I'm not questioning the design at all.
So I just, I just wanted to point that out. It's, it's a very logical design solution, and our request, I think, is a natural, logical extension of the need for the second floor. That's all.
No questions?
Question for staff, so. Would the rec, would the potential amendment be to substitute the exhibits and reference Exhibit A, or would it make sense to just reference Exhibits A and B in totality?
I believe in this, is the instance more is actually better, usually on the opposite, less is more, but in this one, I'm going with A and B.
Is that it for questions? Maybe we're still going to have some discussion, I have a feeling on this one.
Just a clarification, Mark, was the, was a conversation had with the petitioner about where that porch sort of extended to on the east side?
To hold the line.
That was your staff's recommendation?
Don't ask for more.
Don't ask for more.
Yeah, hold the line.
But you, you didn't ask them to stay in compliance?
Not on that, because it's in line with the existing wall. We felt that going up for design and going out the nine feet for design was the appropriate one, don't hope for more. And we were able to work out, see with them, if they pointed out anything in the rear yard, because it's different, that put in non-conforming setback.
So, I do have one question. Going back to that previous slide where you had the front elevation there, the front of, the elevation in the upper left corner, those two doors there, are both of them open? Or is just one? I couldn't really tell from the drawing.
I'll let the architect know.
Okay. And my complete question is this, if you reduce the size of that porch, how much space do you have once you step out that door onto the porch? I mean, you're not stepping out that door onto the porch and it ends right there, or close to it.
Both doors are operable.
Okay.
And, I mean, there's, right now, there's center on that front porch.
Okay.
So it's, if we had to lose 18 inches, we may not have quite enough room for that pair of doors, I don't know, I have to redesign.
Right now, it looks like it's probably just over two feet, two and a half feet, maybe, just eyeballing it with the scale and a pen and a paper like an old-school architect.
So it's about two feet now, you're saying?
What, yes, it's about two, two and a half feet, it looks like.
So.
Probably from that door to the-
End of it.
You would step off the porch, basically, if there was no rail.
The intention is, of course, we have a functional front porch that we can set out of cable and chairs. Addition, I have to point out that the post or column picking up that load in the porch on the very southeast corner is in line with the wall. And so if you pull everything in, pulling in the roof line as well, which obviously the architect spoke to. Right, go back, right there.
That's column right there.
There's a column directly in line, you don't see it in the elevation, because it's all in line.
All right. Any closing comments from the petitioner before we move to discussion? There may be more questions, but-
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody understands the elevations, and I can point out certain things, if there's any confusion whatsoever, the bottom right elevation-
Can you, can you come up to the microphone, please, I'm sorry. I should have told you that earlier.
No, I just want to make sure everybody understands the design and understands the elevations that you're looking at. The bottom right is the east elevation, so that's the elevation that we're talking about. And I can show you the posts, and I can show you, so the roof line of the front porch, right there, that eve line of the front porch, is exactly where the current eve and overhang is on the one-story home. So it's exactly in the same location, it's just, now it's-
It doesn't exist now in that spot.
It doesn't exist now, so it's-
So it's-
But it's designed to-
Anderson, yes.
-match what was there.
All right, thank you. All right, discussion. Eric?
Yes.
You seem to have the strongest opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, it makes sense to, to allow, to ask for the variance at the building itself, I get that, right? That, that's the portion of the, of the existing structure that is, that is non-conforming. To, just to, to allow that, to continue that forward, when it could be cut back, right? There's nothing stopping us from being in compliance there at the front porch. It becomes, you know, cutting that space down by a foot and a half, instead of nine foot 10, it becomes eight foot four.
Anybody else have specific thoughts on that point?
I actually, I went, I was over there yesterday, looked, I actually got out, walked around the neighborhood a little bit. I looked at the plans, I think with, and I did look at the, the front porch area, and sat and kind of looked at it, I think, I think with what they're doing and what they're asking for, I'm okay with it. I guess it's, I'm glad they're willing to invest and stay.
I would note, too, that though it is expanding the non-conformity, it is, it is an open-air porch, too, so it is not a solid wall structure that's going up there. It's, you know, yes, it's going to be the concrete slab going forward and an overhang, but it's not going to be necessarily a full light obstruction or, or, or dead wall to be looked at, per se. You know, the petitioner's come before us, asking for the variation, and as far as that's concerned, it's improvement to the house, improvement to the town, neighborhood, I'm okay with it as it stands.
I think it, I actually think it really makes, it, it really makes the front of the house pop and really makes it look nice.
I don't have a strong opinion on that particular aspect. I do see where Commissioner Lucky's coming from. It might be a little bit structurally more complicated to bring that in a foot and a half, but, I mean, we're not talking about heavy loads and anything undoable. From a design standpoint, I, I don't know exactly what the result is, but, I mean, I can visualize what it would probably be. I also understand that it's a single-story, open-air porch with the sloped roof, but the house next door is pretty close. And while they, they do have two windows on that west side of their house, they don't have any windows at the front corner on the west wall.
No.
They're set quite a bit back into the space between the house, so. Any thoughts down this way?
Well, I, I completely understand Commissioner Lucky's point, and I don't disagree with it. But I do think this is a nice plan. It certainly, all of the elements coexist nicely together. I would be willing to support this plan as it's presented.
Any strong opinions either way? Beyond the ones we've heard?
No.
I'm just trying to see if we've got a consensus for, for what Eric's leaning towards.
I, I'm, I'm out on left field, and that's fine. I get it. I mean, that's fine.
I also understand, Eric.
Yeah, everybody gets where I'm coming from, but we're not gonna sort of, you know, do anything about it. Like, that's fine.
Right, there's a, there's a symmetry that I believe needs to be maintained. If you see it kind of, the front door, double doors kind of line up with the rear doors so that you get a visual all the way through the, the building or through the home. The other is that it looks like, it appears it's going to be a sitting area, and you would have probably two chairs, I, I would envision two chairs out there, to sit out there, and they would be about six foot wide total. If you reduce that from nine foot 10 to eight foot 2, now you only have a two-foot path in order to go through the doors. And that's significantly different than a three-foot, over a three-foot, three-foot six. Usually, that's a comfortable passage dimension. So I, I understand the architectural importance of maintaining that, that four-foot-five or offset or variance on the front porch.
You're awful quiet, Justin.
I'm cognizant of the opinions. I, I, and Commissioner Lucky's well-intentioned indication to bring fidelity to the code. I do understand that. I think in, in part, there potentially is a compromise with this plan in that the revisions to the rear deck do comply to the code, and we are not extending any nonconformity to that end. So in my opinion, I, I think the plans as set are acceptable. We can make the minor revision to the recommendation to reference all exhibits. Perhaps the best way to, to look at this while providing as much fidelity to the code as currently before us is that it's a fair compromise because the back deck does comply.
Yeah. In thinking about this a bit more, I think if the petitioner was here for a variation to, to build a new front porch on an existing, single-story house, we wouldn't think twice about it, probably.
I don't think we, I don't know if we could say that. I mean, that's.
Well, yeah, okay. I'm speaking for myself.
Yeah. I mean, if we're not doing anything else on the front end, I mean, I don't know if we're having that conversation, but that's neither here nor there.
But.
I don't know if staff would be even in that position.
And I would, and I would, where I would agree fully is if this was a two-story addition into that space in the front, I, I would not be in favor of it.
You would not, right.
So this is kind of middle ground. So I'm not hearing a consensus for Commissioner Lucky's proposal. And unless there's additional discussion.
Pardon me?
I said unless there's additional discussion, then I would request a, you know, a motion from whoever wants to make it.
Make a motion to recommend approval of PZ 2406 for a special use for. Nope, that's the wrong one, sorry. exited out of the correct one. To, I make a motion to recommend approval of PZ 2408 for variation from Table 2-3 of Article 2, Section 2.3, Lot and Building Regulations of the Zoning Ordinance to Reduce the Minimum Interior Sideyard Setback Requirements to Four Feet Along the East Property Line as Depicted on Exhibits A and B for 24 East Monroe Street.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All right, roll call. Calvert?
Yes.
Hofstra?
Yes.
Amiu?
Yes.
Lutke?
Sure. After all the discussion, I will vote yes.
Orlowsky?
Yes.
Romano?
Yes.
Kuchlinsky?
Yes.
I, too, vote yes. With that, our recommendation will pass to the Village Board. They're the final decision-makers on this. Thank you, good luck. All right. Our next item is PZ 2406 for 231 East North Avenue, special use, planned unit development, subdivision, vacation of public right-of-way. Petitioner, Christopher Enright. When you're ready, Michelle.
The subject property, as noted, was located at 231 East North Avenue, which currently houses Strats.
The owner's what?
Strats. S-T-R-A-T-S. The proposal includes a special use, planned unit development, subdivision, and vacation of public right-of-way. I'll go over a summary of their requests, allow for comments by the petitioner, allow for any questions by the commission, with ready for commission discussion and motion if appropriate. The application includes a proposed Bell Tire location for tire and auto service. The proposal includes a plat of subdivision with vacation of public right-of-way on a parcel adjacent to the subject property, a special use for personal vehicle repair and maintenance in the C3 zoning district per Table 6-1, which is the used table, and a planned unit development to allow for a construction of a facility with certain deviations included within the plan. The proposed building is within all setback requirements for the C3 zoning district. The trash enclosure would be located at the southeast corner of the property. The application includes consolidation of two curb cuts into one curb cut. Thirty-eight parking stalls are included within the plan where only 26 stalls are required. An existing fence along Schiller Street would be removed, and a new six-foot-tall vinyl privacy fence would be installed along that property line. And the landscape plan also includes trying to save trees, deciduous trees on an adjacent site as part of the construction activity. On the screen is the proposed plat of subdivision. One item of note is that due to the location and orientation of the proposed parking lot, staff did have the applicant include a fire apparatus access easement to keep the middle of the parking lot clear should any emergency vehicles need to visit the site. On the screen currently is the subject as the site plan. The gray indicates the building. The parking is located along the west and south end of the site. And the drive access aisle between the building and the parking stalls, and then this rear paved area is to allow for vehicular traffic and truck drop-off of the tires. On the screen are the auto turn exhibits of both their delivery vehicle and the village's largest fire apparatus, showing that both can traverse the site. Staff did include the utility plan should we need to reference it during discussion tonight. On the screen is the landscape plan. This plan does include additional landscaping along the west, south, and east sides of the site that is going to exist today. They've also provided a photometric plan showing the light fixtures, both architectural that are included on the building, and then the pole-mounted light fixtures along the edges of the parking lot. And then the proposed elevations of the proposed building, which features a brick masonry building with overhead doors along the west elevation, and then also additional windows on the east and north, which are into the retail area.
East and north? Or east and north?
East and north. Into the retail area. Also have those elevations a bit larger on the screen for reference. And then they have provided elevations of their proposed trash enclosure as well. And then the proposed signage for those elevations, and their proposed ground sign, which would go along the north property line.
Ground sign?
Staff has included the standards to meet the special use again. We will hold a public hearing, allowing for any comments on the proposed application. And then staff has provided a sample motion should the commission feel it is appropriate. And if that staff or the petitioner are available for any questions.
All right. So presentation from staff today, I mean, from the petitioner, are we relying on, yeah, please come up and state your name, spell your last name, please.
My name is Brandon Ferro, last name spelled F-E-R-R-O. I'm with Contour Land Group. We are, I'm here on behalf of Chris Enright.
Susan. Brad?
Brandon.
And then your favorite term?
Contour Land Group.
Contour Land Group?
Correct. I have a presentation, per se. Staff did a very good job of putting together a report. Staff's been very accommodating through this whole process. And just in general, the, the location on Roosevelt was Bell's first Chicagoland location. It's gone very well, and pending good conversation tonight, we're looking forward to opening a second. So I'm available for questions, and then our signage consultant, Dave Brink, is here as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Please.
My name's Edward Chakowski, that's spelled C-Z-A-J-K-O-W-S-K-I. I'm with Elmer's Auto Care. We're right next door. We were talking to somebody who sent us the plans, and they were talking about the curb cut, which is, is perfect. But the question we had for you guys was the, they were gonna need like 10 feet of space. So I could show you on the map, we have, between our bays and where the, the curb would be, it's 32 feet. So we're asking for 10 feet with trucks and everything, and, you know, a typical van is 15 feet long. So our concern was if you were doing the construction during the week. Now, we're closed on Saturday and Sunday and 3 o'clock on Friday, but if we can coordinate somehow, like maybe doing the curb like the first thing before you do all the rest of the construction, I don't know how the plans are gonna go. And, and the other thing is, how quickly can you get this going? We need to, you know, make some, we've got some issues going on next door that we'd like you to, we're looking forward to having you as part of the community, so. That's basically about all I have there.
You, if, if he's done, then yes, you could please answer that to the best of your ability.
Just for clarification, it sounds like they're talking about the construction access easement to complete the improvements on there.
Yeah.
Not a 10-foot encroachment to the property.
Correct. The, that would just, that's the 10 feet just to build it. We can definitely coordinate all that. And I think 10 feet is just giving us some breathing room, so we will certainly work with being able to be as far out of the way, and timing-wise, that's, will not be a problem at all.
Okay, 'cause currently, I'm sure you're seeing the spot, he's got the drive-through going out.
Yeah.
And obviously, if you did it before, you tore everything else up, it would give you area on both sides.
Yep. Once we have the contractor on board, we can have them reach out, and we can get that all coordinated. So we don't have one, we haven't put these out to bid yet, so.
Thank you.
Though if I please, Elmer's and Anderson and Mymer's are tired of visiting this, I'll go.
So, so is it safe for me to assume that you're not opposing this project?
No.
Okay. As a neighbor, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Are anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this? Please state your name and spell your last name, please.
Dawn Heer, H-E-H-R. So I live directly behind 231 East North Avenue. From Schiller all the way back to Hill, I own all the property. And we, too, have been dealing with a nightmare for 22 years, so we are looking forward to having new neighbors. But I will say that over the years, we've had a number of issues with different things that were supposed to happen with new development that were never enforced. So I wanted to come forward and point a few things out to make sure that they actually get carried out. So my husband and I, we came in, we looked at the plans, and everything looks very nice, but obviously, being right behind, having 10 bays, I'm sure everybody knows how loud the, the tools can be at a tire shop. And if they were facing North Avenue, which most tire companies in the area are facing the main road, not off to the side or to the rear, thank God you guys didn't propose to be in the rear, because obviously, we would have a problem with that. But even with it being off to the side, even though there's gonna be some new shrubbery down the street, a development went in, it's changed names, but it's Point Blank, and then it became Something America. And we were told we would never hear any of the noise, but of course, we hear all the shooting going on. They planted sticks, was the shrubbery. I mean, it'll take 20 years before those trees become a barrier between that property and the neighbors, right? So in a, my, one of my major concerns was having a six-foot fence is not that much of a barrier for the neighbors. For example, Napa Auto, the fence that they have between them and their, and their neighbors is an eight-foot fence. Yeah. Everybody knows where Napa Auto is, right? They have an eight-foot fence between them and their neighbors. And I know that's not necessarily to code, but when you're adjoining residential, that's something I would like to be considered. Or could there be a berm built up off the back there on, off of Schiller, off that south part of the property, and the fence put on top of that, just to give there a little bit more of a sound barrier? There are trees there, but they're mostly weeds, because strats killed all the, the nice trees that were there. Gating of the property, obviously, that property has been a major loitering situation for over 20 years. I have a concern that that loitering could continue on after they're gone and kids want to come and hang out, because nobody there to be monitoring who's hanging out there. Again, the, the gun shop, they have gates on their property to keep people from coming onto the property when they're not there, so I'd like to maybe consider. So I'd like to maybe consider that maybe gate or chain it off so that, that prevents people from coming onto the property after hours. Lighting has always been an issue, especially with strats. Their lights flood right into our home. I've reported it numerous times, nothing's ever been done. The building to the left of us is a, an industrial building, the Farcasso Development. They have lights on theirs, their lights were flooding into our home. They put a few covers on, but not to prevent them from coming into our windows. So our second story windows, the lights were literally flooding right through my daughter's bedroom windows and nothing was ever done about it. So I see that there is going to be lighting, which we were going to suggest around the perimeter of the property going towards the building, not flooding out into the neighbors. But it looks like you're going to have some lights on the building too. So I just want to be assured that there's going to be covers on those lights to keep the light on the property per the code.
Okay.
What was the development you said?
Farcasso?
Yeah, is that a name? Farcasso?
Farcasso was, is the...
I just, I'm looking for the word. Is it a company name or something?
Yeah.
Okay. And then one other thing before I forget, you live off of Hill, Schiller?
We live on Schiller, but we own all the property at Hill.
At Hill?
To Hill.
To Hill.
From Schiller to Hill.
Okay, thanks. That's all. Thank you.
Drainage, drainage is a bit of an issue. I know that the village is working on the drainage for that area. And it looks really good what they're doing. So I just want to make sure that there's, doesn't end up being variances down the end because the water does all back up onto our property at, currently, that's where all the water is going. Another concern that I have is the garbage corral. The garbage corral is in the back corner and they're proposing it to be in the back corner again. We've been dealing with garbage for years and the village is fully aware of this. I've reported it so many times. I would love to see the garbage corral up by the building where it can be maintained and controlled a little bit better, if possible, instead of having it all the way in the back corner. Because what happens is animals get into the garbage corral and then they drag it over the fence and it ends up in the parkway behind the fence. And then it, you know, if it's not seen, it doesn't get taken care of. Is there going to be any loudspeakers or PA systems that would be on the outside of the building? Also, I was told that there was, that nobody was looking for any back access onto Schiller. So I just want to make sure that there's not going to be like a back gate or anything like that. The, the gun place, when they, when they were developing the property, they did the majority of their construction from Schiller Street and they destroyed the street. They had some, and it's not an improved street. It's only got like a couple of inches of asphalt. And we reported that to the village, there should have been a bond, the street should have been repaired. Nothing was ever done. So that's another concern is, I'm, our street is destroyed because the trucks were actually lined up all the way down in front of our house. So I'm concerned, will this happen again? You know, as they're working on this property, will they be working from our street and destroying it even further? So I just want to point that out also. And then hours of operation. I just looked up what your hours are at a local place and just curious if they're going to be similar to that?
Exactly.
Okay.
I'll have you answer the questions on the record later, just because we may have some of the same questions.
All right. I think that's about everything that I wanted to point out.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wanting to speak on this item? All right. Seeing no one, we'll move to questions from staff, from the commission, I mean. Question for staff that I think would address, I could try to explain it, but you guys are better equipped. One of her questions was about lighting. Can you briefly touch on how our lighting code works and what that means as far as the property boundaries?
So there are code requirements for light levels at the property lines. This proposal on the pole mounted fixtures does include shields to keep the light on the subject property. The lights that were mentioned on the building are architectural in nature, so they're not floodlights that would cast a lot of light as the resident was concerned about. Light fixtures that are pole mounted fixtures, they're shining into the parking lots. So that should address many of the concerns.
Okay.
Yeah. And blue, the, the blue data points are zero. So this southern property line, minimum lighting.
And just, just to raise a point, after construction, you guys will verify those light levels correct? And if those light levels are incorrect, they will be corrected if that means adjusting shields or...
Adjusting shields.
And if a neighbor calls and says they're too bright, what do you guys have to do?
Come out and we have a photo of the light.
Yeah. So that's, we've had, now, if there's an existing, now, what I would say is if there's an existing property that didn't meet those limits when it was built, can't retroactively enforce that. But...
We are always willing to investigate any complaint.
Yeah. And I, not you, but I know previous staff that's had to leave this meeting to go do light studies because it was dark. So, and neighbors had complained.
Then you won't see. Well, I...
That was... That's what I was just saying. We've had staff go out, I'm going to need your name. I know you, or not to comment, one or the other.
I'm Brandon Heer.
Okay.
K-H-R.
Thank you.
And we were also told you guys don't have the meter to, to, also for lighting, to check. Because we tried to, it was strapped, you know, when Mike used to have the high lights that shine into the property, strapped him and put up these big lights that shine. All of these, hey, you can't do 22 years, you got it.
22 years ago, though, we didn't have a lighting code at all.
Actually, the building to the west had the same issue.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not a problem. Those animals know what they're doing.
And the building to the west just got, they just moved in there a couple of years ago and their lights are flooding through them too.
Yeah. One other thing I'd touch on is on the issue of gates and chains on the front entrance. I think generally speaking, on a building of this size, this lot depth, the fire department wouldn't be keen on that. And with, with vehicles potentially pulling off of North Avenue, if they meet a gate or a chain, then they really have no choice but to back out into traffic. That would be my take on why that could be bad. But as far as the other questions, if you want to come up, I've got a list. Address the ones you think you can address and...
You were saying that gates.
Do they? If you have a question, if you have a question, I mean, answer the questions that you think you can address.
I think I got it. I think I wrote down as much as I could. Noise, unfortunately with this, inside of a lot, this is, our only option is to go out east. Bell's made a commitment to moving to all electric tools, so no more pneumatic.
Thank you. Excuse me. Could you please...
Sorry. I'm addressing you.
I'll use the no...
They've made a commitment to doing electric tools. So we've had noise concern, or concerns from neighbors about noise previously. So they have made a switch to electric tools. There's obviously going to be, it's a tire shop, you're going to get, you know, banging on rotors and things like that. But for the most part, we are significantly quieter than competitors. There's no loudspeakers. All the vehicles that are taken into and out of the bays are all done by Bell's staff. Nobody else is driving in or out. Fence site, I don't, I'm not as familiar with the code. I don't believe eight feet would be conforming.
That's correct.
Okay. So we did the max of what we could. If we, if staff wants an eight foot, we could, we have no, we have no problem with that. We were just trying to conform. Gating was addressed. I, I agree. I'd be typically, I don't think Bell would have an issue with putting a gate, but I don't think the village would, village and fire would want that. Lighting, we already kind of touched on. We meet all codes other than the set, there was, we, it was a, with this size of site, we don't meet currently, and I am not a lighting designer. I tried to take as much from our lighting designer into this meeting as I could. There is a 2.0 foot candle minimum in the parking lot that we are just not meeting. Basically, we would need a pole in the center of the parking lot in order to meet that or our poles around the exterior would have to be incredibly bright and then we would not meet the exterior requirements. So one of our deviations as part of this on the plan is that we will not meet the 2.0 minimum. So we actually have technically less light than what would be required. Drainage wise, this has been a back and forth with the village. We were going to maintain the vacant right of way. That is switched back to, the village is going to fix that up now. So that floodway will be improved. Overall, we are reducing imperviousness. We are collecting everything on site and sending it to North Avenue. So that will be an improvement. As far as moving the dumpster, I don't believe we have any room to push it up any further just with how this lays out and having the truck turning where it wants to be. As far as the trash that goes into it, it's all going to be boxes and there's, you know, the most amount of food you're going to get into it is, you know, workers' lunches. It's not going to be the same type of trash that you're getting from a food service restaurant. So typically, and I guess touching on trash a little separately, none of the scrap tires are stored in the dumpster. This is all trash from the building. Tires are stored inside and picked up and sent off to Michigan. Construction access is on North Avenue. We are absolutely not coming in through Schiller, have no intention to do so. Are we have an approved construction plan that has us coming in through that single Think I hit all of them.
Yeah. So she, one question, and I, and I was going to ask this as well, is what are the hours of operation typically?
Never earlier than 8:00 AM, never later than 8:00 PM, closed on Sundays.
Okay. And then what is, what would your typical peak staffing be?
I want to say peak would be 10 to 15, I think, at one single time.
And that's probably on a Saturday?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. Questions from anyone else up here?
I have a question for, for staff. Have we, I mean, their facility on Roosevelt Road backs up to apartment complexes. Have we had noise complaints from the apartment complexes or the houses that are just to the west of that facility?
We have no open quote violations on their existing facility, any.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just, this is more of an education. You're educating us now here, Mark and Michelle. This is, we're going as a special use in a planned development. What's, what's tripping the requirement to go to the planned development versus just a special use within the C3? Obviously, we're aligning everything within the underlying sort of zoning district, but what's, where are our deviations if that's what we're talking about?
Absolutely. So the special use for the auto by itself, right? And then the special use for a planned development. It's a very unique site. There's actually three right of ways that it's adjacent to. So everything is a street yard until the plat of subdivision gets approved and then that, that west partial right of way is vacated. Now it becomes an interior yard, but still with a front and rear street.
Through lot, essentially.
Correct. Right. So in designing that, everything is a front yard. So we decided instead of listing seven variations, it's a planned development. I like to do the rule of thumb is that once we're at three, let's convert it to a planned development and just make the site be the site. So a couple of things, that's what's on our front yard. The fence, again, because it's a rear, six is our max, but it's in a rear, so technically it's four. But we want to provide a six-foot vinyl...
Solid.
Solid fence.
Yeah.
But four-foot open, as we all just approved our new fence code, would be the required. But because it's a through lot, it feels like the rear, but technically it's... What else we got? Drive aisle with max, ours is 24 max, they're providing 25. As you saw, the auto turn, it's warranted, but technically it's a deviation to the, to the site design. Oh, the curb flare. Yeah. So this is one, it's in red, it's at the very north. So this is IDOT jurisdiction. They are the approving entity for the access to the site, but we still have code requirements on this road, even though we're not issuing that access firm. So that is going to be approved by IDOT, but it's a, technically it's a variation under our code, even though we're not the one issuing the firm.
Right.
So it's just those like weird technicalities on this unique site.
Okay. Related to, since we're on that topic.
Yeah.
I noticed, so there's a deviation for the signage.
Correct.
Essentially because currently, as it sets, you have three frontages and a lot. And, and one of those frontages is going away.
Correct. And that request to go away was actually a staff request.
Yeah.
So they're running the plat of subdivision process essentially for us as an approval for this document. So we are, we drafted the, meet the sign code per the existing condition, the deviation is that you're now vacating a right of way. You no longer technically get that credit. That's why the sign plan is in a, nobody's going to even know that the vac, the right of way is vacated. Nothing, there's no road ever coming in.
Yeah. And I actually don't have any issue with, with that. I mean, it's, it's a large building on North Avenue, which is a high-speed thoroughfare and sometimes small signs look weirder on big buildings than big signs. So I, I have no issue with that. I just wanted to clarify that point. And then I think the, the report mentions that there are several landscape deviations. Can we touch briefly on what some of the bigger ones could be?
So, so there, one, there's a landscape island within the western row of parking stalls, shown with the cursor. Each landscape island would require one tree within that island. However, there's a fire hydrant location within this island, thus they're not providing a tree in this location. Also, the fence code requires that the fence that they're providing along the effective rear of the property be wood and they're proposing a vinyl fence. And that would be another material deviation from the code as well. And then they're also not providing foundation landscaping along the west building elevation due to the overhead doors.
We don't want them.
And I asked for foundation planning and they laughed at me, so.
Yeah.
So those are, those would be the significant, so to speak, landscape variations? Okay. Terms of, trying to get back to landscape plan here, give me a second. Large number of perimeter trees, even though we're technically losing one on that landscape island there, two immediately adjacent to it on the property boundary. And then, this is more of a curiosity, that, that the talk of saving existing deciduous trees on the southeast portion of the existing site, what are we talking about? Can you point me to what trees we're trying to save?
So there's two that the trunks are off-site, but all, we all know how trees work, the roots are on-site. So valiant effort, we're going to do the best, but...
So those two trees are technically off-site? Okay.
The gentleman who spoke earlier is off-site.
Okay. When I was looking at it from the ground, it, it almost looks like they're on strats. So it's, it's kind of tough to tell there.
They are surveyed.
Okay.
And they're, the trunks are off-site. We're talking inches, but...
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm, with the landscape plan up here, you can see it is robust. That is part of the planned development, give and take. Yes, they didn't meet a shade tree in the island, but they gave us two along the property line. We have an extensive southern... We have an extensive southern, I guess, yeah, the proposal is beyond the code, because there's no foundation plans, right? So these are the, I can't meet this because it's 10 bay doors, great, how about we put it on Schiller against the neighbors that were speaking earlier? So that's the point of the planned development in this.
Mark, could you briefly sort of describe what's happening with the right-of-way, how that's all?
Yeah, sure. Currently, that is a village-owned right-of-way.
Right.
That has many utilities, aboveground and underground in it, including a drainage ditch that is part of a regional stormwater system. The village, Public Works specifically, was awarded a grant in order to go and clean, channelize, regrade, and enhance that stormwater to alleviate downstream flooding. That grant was issued a while ago, I think last year, and it went out to bid, and the construction, as you saw with the clearing of the trees, has begun. Step one was get rid of the invasive trees, the trees are in the way of the future drainage ditch and all that stuff, completely separate distinct from the petitioner having to apply at the same time that the grant was awarded in construction. So just by luck, they happen to be talking right now. And so, yeah, that project is going to be completed, and it'll alleviate all that downstream flooding that goes into the south.
Will that be completed?
We're weeks away from actual construction here.
Is, I don't know if it's still there, but the outbuilding, let's call it the outbuilding.
Shed.
The shed.
Yeah.
And I assume belongs to Strats. Obviously, that's going away.
Absolutely.
But, yeah, that's a...
Are you asking where is it located?
It straddles the property.
Does it?
I'm saying that's a...
Do you believe there wasn't a permit issued for that shed?
That's...
Surprise, surprise.
That's the village property, right?
Well, okay.
That was reported numerous...
We've got a court reporter, so we gotta cut down a lot of cross-talk.
There's a demolition plan associated with the full thing, it's a complete demo. All structures are coming out, all curbs are coming out, all concrete's coming out, and then almost all trees are coming out, because there's scrub or dead, and obviously new construction's happening, so they're in the way.
I really am just kind of asking, and this isn't on you, because you guys haven't been here that long, but it's kind of a theme in the village.
We haven't been here that long? That's the theme?
No. Well, there is that, but I was talking more about the theme of right-of-ways that are not vacated, that are being used for things that are not...
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so we want to get this out of the right-of-way designation, the village will still own and maintain the property, we don't want to, we want it to be a parcel, a taxable ID, we do not want it to be a right-of-way anymore. It actually gives us more control and rights over what happens to it.
Okay, okay. I stole your time, if you...
No, no, that's fine, so I'm just, I'm going back to the, I'm going to the plot of subdivision.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it looks like it's absorbed in one big property, but there technically going to be two parcels?
Correct, Lot 1 and Lot 2. Lot 2 is only the right-of-way, same exact...
And it has nothing to do with their project?
Nothing is that.
It just happens to be...
By the kindness of their survey, they presented up a plot of subdivision for me.
Excuse me.
She's having trouble hearing because of the conversation in the back.
Yes, this is a team effort.
Understood.
Yeah.
I'll keep mine for the comments.
Any questions from this end?
No.
Not right now.
Okay. Questions? We're all good on questions? All right. Any closing comments from the petitioner, or you set?
Correct.
You're set? All right, Mike, you said you wanted to save yours for discussion, I'll let you go.
First, I'll start with the, let me clear the commissioners' desk, go on.
Let the record show that Commissioner Jackson arrived at 8:45.
I would say my main concern was on Lot 1, which is not the development, it's actually the right-of-way and alley. I wanted to make sure that something was going to be done with that. I made it a point yesterday, I actually went to Village Hall to question some of that, because I didn't, I don't want to see a new development come in and the village leave our portion now looking like an eyesore, because I was, I was at the site yesterday. I do like the heavy amount of greenery that you've put towards the back and on the side. I've went, I've went through the first Bell Tire design, I was up here when you guys did that. I've looked, I've looked at your site since it was built, and it still looks great. I think you're a good neighbor. I like, I like the development, I have no issues with it. It seems like everybody else that I've talked to, everybody's in favor of it. My only concern, like I said, was the drainage ditch and that portion of it, to make sure that that was addressed also. That's all I got. I love, I like the development, I think it'll be great.
All right. Any other discussion, comments?
I would echo Commissioner Orlowsky, I am, I am a customer of the Roosevelt Road Bell Tire location, and I have been nothing but pleased, the site, the building, the staff, I mean, they've always, they've been fantastic, very receptive, the site's always clean, our buildings well-maintained. I'm glad to have another location in town, and I think they will be good neighbors for you guys, too.
We'll look forward to it. So we'll chime in with his, how soon can you get going?
I will make one other comment, and I, and it's just from, I've dealt with automobile businesses in the past, I don't know how well a gate on the property would work for you, only for the fact that if customers arrange to drop off vehicles at night, they won't be able to get on your property. So I would, I wouldn't put a gate on a stipulation.
From the questions and comments of the existing neighbors, it seems as though the soon, likely soon-to-be neighbors are very supportive of this in comparison to the current existing operation. As someone who can hear the volume and the decibel level coming from the current existing property owner during weekdays, the evenings that they are operating, certain gatherings, trying to be very diplomatic in my tone here, I think that this plan is a drastic improvement of the property.
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna echo the same with, as far as, first Bell Tire site, you know, we presented some pretty pictures, and we're presenting a lot of pretty pictures, and I know Eric and myself and others up here, it's kind of their thing to make pretty pictures of buildings, and a lot of those pretty pictures don't necessarily manifest themselves in the wild. I think the Bell Tire site on Roosevelt did a pretty good job of that. That site is obviously somewhat limited by the kind of cross-access it needs to the east, and so shared, sort of shared, pseudo-shared parking on the east, but I think what was done there was, was really good, and the building there, I don't know, it's almost better than I expected. I'm not gonna say it's better than the pictures, but it's better than I expected. So I assume we're gonna get the same product here. And the nice thing about the PUD process is it ties more of that in, as opposed to the site down there, which was as of right. Well, I mean, there were variations for it, but, but as far as materials and so on. So we have a pretty good idea of what we're gonna get here. I like a Strats cheeseburger, but I know a lot of neighbor, but I know a lot of neighbors, but I know a lot of neighbors have their complaints, and tire shop or not, it's not gonna be louder on a Friday night than Strats. Anything else? There's no other comments or discussion, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to recommend approval, PZ 2406, for a special use for personal vehicle repair and maintenance, a special use for a planned unit development with certain deviations as shown in Exhibit A, and for a plot of subdivision with vacation of public right-of-way as shown in Exhibit B, located at 231 East North Avenue.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, is there any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Calvert?
Yes.
Hofstra?
Yes.
Jackson?
I'm all for it, but I missed most of this, I'll say yes.
Lemieux?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Orlowsky?
Yes.
Romano?
Yes.
Shulinski?
Yes.
I too vote yes, and with that, our recommendation will pass to the village board. Good luck as this moves forward. All right, that is the end of our new business. Anything from staff this evening?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing. Anything from our board liaison?
Nothing.
That's good. Any comments, questions from the commission on anything? No, that's rare. All right, any public comments on non-agenda items before we close? Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion is our second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.